Yes, we do believe we do.
All right, wonderful. Um, let's all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands. Under God, indivisible, just as. So let's move on to attendance.
Ready, A. Apostato.
Present.
A. Lewitt.
Present.
D. Mello.
Present.
B. Reyes.
Yeah.
And Russo.
Present.
J. Sanford.
Here.
E. Seitzman.
Present.
I'll read the announcement regarding notice, the Open Public Meetings Act. I would like to advise those present that notice of this regular meeting of the House and Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular meeting of Thursday, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, was given by publication of the annual meeting notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger as a public notice on Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, as notification to the general public of the meeting. Sent to the city clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, the Hoboken Public Library, and Hoboken Police Department, and posted on the authority website on Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty two. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, I direct the minutes of this meeting to state the following. As a result of an emergency declared by governor, the governor of New Jersey, the meeting will be conducted exclusively through the use of communications equipment. This procedure is in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash nine point three, which states that a public body shall not be deemed to have violated any provision of the Open Public Meeting Act in conducting a meeting by means of communication or other electronic equipment. In addition, this procedure complies with Article Three, Section Seven of the Authority bylaws, which allows for participation in authority meetings by members of the Board of Commissioners by means of telephone conference or similar telephonic or communications equipment. And then, Counselor, do you want to sum that up? I know we were just going directly into closed session.
Yes, we are going into closed session. That is the only purpose for this meeting. We will be adopting a resolution to that effect. Accordingly, anyone who is on the public portion that is occurring now, um, should understand that after we adopt this resolution, um, only those people who are permitted to be in closed session will remain. We will indeed come out of closed session, but at that point, the only thing we will do is adjourn. We will not take any action in closed session and will not take any action when we come out of closed session. So the practical impact of that is that the public will be excluded from the rest of the meeting once this resolution is adopted. As a special meeting, there will not be any opportunity for the public to comment on any subject. This meeting is limited to the sub-specific special subject of what is being called repositioning of the authority under the Rad program and other planning issues related to it. If anybody in the public does indeed want to comment on that issue or any other housing authority issue, they have the opportunity to do that at the next regular meeting of the authority, which occurs on February tenth, starting at seven. And those have procedures, the regular meetings, for the public to make a comment at that time and it can include anything related to the various repositioning meetings that have occurred so far that have occurred in public session.
Okay.
Back to you, Chair.
All right, and then. All right, so I guess I'm gonna call the, uh, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty twenty two. Actually, I guess I should read the title first. So Resolution Number twenty twenty two dash zero one point zero seven, a resolution of the House and Authority of the City of Hoboken to enter into closed session to discuss issues presented in the repositioning of the Authority's public housing. I'll make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, you have a second? Could we, uh, have a vote, please?
A. Apostato.
Yes.
A. Lewitt.
Yes.
And D. Mello.
Yes.
B. Reyes.
Yes.
And Russo.
Hi.
J. Sanford.
Yes.
E. Seitzman.
Yes.
Okay, so it passes. We need to now have everybody clear out, and we need to stop the Facebook feed.
Okay, Angel, please stop the feed of Facebook and remove. I don't see anyone really on this meeting but us right now.
We have no member of the public. Um, the Facebook is stopped. Should I stop recording or keep recording?
Keep recording, Angel.
Yes, we, we've recorded the closed sessions for future reference, I believe, in all cases, and I don't see any reason to change that.
Yep, I agree with that. All right, so, um, I guess, uh, Torti Galus and Partners, they have the floor.
Well, good evening, everyone. Um, Mr. Miller, uh, Mr. Rick, I thought you were gonna take the lead.
Yeah, and I jumped in and I was muted. Can you believe that? So, so.
My apologies, Director, if you could.
No, it's okay. I'm now, I'm now unmuted. Uh, this is a follow-up in many ways to, to our closed session of last week. Um, during the week, I sent out kind of a summary memo of our discussion points uh, from last week, and, uh, uh, Lornis and Angel, can I do a share screen here? No problem. Um, no, I believe I can. And what I'm gonna do is put up the memo I put, uh, that I put out this past week. It was kind of a summary of the discussion points of last week. And what I'd like to accomplish with this meeting is to go over those discussion points. Uh, those are points that the planning team really needs. I'd like to be able to review them, prompt any more discussion we need on those points. And then Torti Galus has a presentation for us as well, once I'm done, that really follows up um, on the memo and, and, and my point, on the points I make in, in the memo and the points that you had as discussion points. Um, these are, uh, discussion points and, and directions that, that we all need as staff and our planning team uh, to move forward, to finish off the plan. Um, so we need to, we need to focus in on these and make sure that, that we're all, um, in the same direction. So I am going to share this screen and use this.
Mark, if I may, uh, between last week's meeting and, and today, didn't you also have a discussion about these with your committee?
Yes, we did. Um, we did go to the, uh, renovation redevelopment committee and reviewed this. Uh, as I said in my, uh, email when I sent this out, and so it's already been reviewed and through committee as well. And, uh, had a good discussion at that meeting this past week. Thank you, Jaime.
Yep.
Um, so in the memo, I talked about again how this is confidential. This is part of the closed session process. Um, and, and I talk about how, how it was presented by the Torti Galus team on January thir- thirteenth of, of really four major issues that, that we put on the table and discussed at that meeting. And the first was talking about the preferred bedroom mix, and should that bedroom mix be maintained, or should there be an adjustment for current under-over-housing conditions? The second issue was the total development unit count range and what that should be. Um, the third was an acceptable range of building heights, and the fourth is the preferred phasing strategy. Uh, should all existing units be replaced? First, should mixed-income units be incorporated into the mid-phases? So that was kind of the four questions that were on the table, um, last, uh, meeting we had on January thirteenth. And, uh, those questions were developed in accordance with our principles that we passed back in June. Um, so what I did, along with input from our planning team and review by the attorney, and then subsequently through our uh, committee, um, is put down my understanding of, of what I thought the board's preliminary thoughts were. And, and I, uh, and we thought that this would be functional in order to remind us where we were last week, in order to move the conversation forward, and, uh, and see if, if we've got, uh, agreement as we move forward. Um, so this is my understanding of the board's preliminary thoughts, and I think it might be best is as we go through this, um, we have discussion on, on, on the seven points that are included here. Um, so if, if anyone's got discussion on them, it'll probably be good. I'll, I'll read one, and then we'll take some time to discuss it and go through it, go from there. Um, so number one, uh, one-for-one replacement remains the overall guiding principle, as does assurance that there will be no displacement of existing residents. Um, so that, that was first, and, and I think from the beginning of this process, that's been number one. Um, uh, as we, as we move forward, I should have said introduction, uh, as we go through these, um, we would like, and I would like that at the meeting on February tenth, um, that, that we go public. It's time, and, and we, we, we find our, our, our discussion points and our issues with the board internally, and then we move forward, and I think February tenth would be a good time to, to go public and, and go from there on this. So anyway, back to number one. Um, I mean, I, I think that's a slam dunk, it seems to me. One-for-one replacement, the overall guiding principle, the assurance that there will be no displacement of existing residents, right? Solid, no questions. Right, good.
Question. This is Terry, the court reporter. I just, hi, not to interrupt, but there, it says recording pause, and I didn't know if you had said that you wanted to record. My, mine is saying recording pause, so I don't know if we're supposed to be recording, but I'm just letting anyone know that, that's what I see on my screen.
Mine is still strobing with a red light and saying.
Okay.
Yeah, mine says recording also.
Okay.
And, and now it just popped up with a sentence saying this webinar is being recorded, so.
Same here, so. Okay, thank you for that, Terry. Um, always want to keep on top of the tech. Uh, the, uh, number two, the apartment size mix can be adjusted to account for current under-over-housing conditions. Uh, again, for example, if we've got a, uh, a, a single person living in a three-bedroom, that as we go into the redevelopment, that person, person's unit or the unit count for that would be adjusted to know we need a, a one-bedroom rather than a three. Place versa, if somebody is overhoused and needs a larger, uh, unit size, that our gross unit count would take that into account, and, uh, we would add a larger unit to our overall unit count because of the reality on the ground of our family sizes. Any comments on that one? Number three, the low end of the acceptable unit count range is full replacement of the one thousand three hundred and fifty-four existing units, including the two hundred Fox units, Fox Hill units, which will remain. No maximum number of units was established. The board would like to maintain the flexibility in future phases to account for changing conditions and the potential to add other affordable housing units throughout the city. That's a mouthful, right? That's a few, few concepts in there.
Question.
Yeah.
My, my question is, why are we talking full replacement of one thousand three hundred and fifty-four existing units when the main campus has, I think, eight hundred and four units? Um, we're, we're not talking about knocking down the senior buildings.
No, we're not.
Good.
No, we're not. Absolutely not. That's not in the plan at this point. We, just to be clear, everything we see right now shows substantial renovation on, on the other ways, and, and I don't know whether we need to make that a little clearer.
I would suggest, I would suggest say full replacement or preservation of.
I, I think that works.
The only, the only word choice I would use differently is rehabilitation, just because that's the words used in land use law in New Jersey.
Yeah.
Or, or rehabilitation.
For five thousand units, right?
Oh. The, uh, the flex.
That, Aaron, I like it.
Listen, Doc, listen, Dr. Mike, that's where we got the flexibility, all right?
So let's just make sure we're on the same page here. Number three should now be the full replacement or what's your preference for it?
Or rehabilitation, right?
Or rehabilitation.
Of the thirteen fifty-four. Okay, everybody all right on that?
Yep.
I, i- if you're gonna, I'm, I'm sorry, if you're gonna do that, I, I don't even know if you need the parentheses at that point, right?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I agree, because it's almost like, why, why are we distinguishing Fox Hill?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the reason for the parentheses, Commissioner, is because we want it clear that with respect to Fox Hill, those units are already underway in terms of whatever rehabilitation is going to be made.
Well, maybe, maybe.
Maybe state that, yeah. Fox Hill underway.
Or get rid of the "which will remain" clause, because it's like, including the four hundred Fox Hill units currently undergoing rehabilitation.
Yeah, I, I like what, uh, Commissioner Russo suggested would be, which would be to say, including the two hundred Fox Hill units, which are already undergoing rehabilitation.
Right, already undergoing. Yeah, that's great, that's perfect.
Well, Dave said four hundred units, so we should add that.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, you did. Check the tape. We got him, Aaron.
Good.
Nope.
So where do you want to put the eight hundred?
Yeah, there you go.
You got it.
Anything more on this one? I like those changes. And I, I mean, I, 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 to me, it'd be just as well to say, including the Fox Hill units. Um, but, um, that's, that's fine.
Well, the concern I have there is that I don't want somebody in Fox Hill and then turn around and say, and you're gonna do more work on our units too?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the currently undergoing is.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. Uh, I, I also want to just, just plant the seed that as we go through this, um, you know, five years from now, there's certainly a possibility of doing another Fox Hill deal and, and doing more work at Fox Hill. Um, so just, just to keep that in mind, that, that I, and I think that's going to be inevitable in the Hoboken Housing Authority's future, is more work at Fox Hill. Um, if you remember, we did Fox Hill at a very small amount of work, so we could get a rad under our belt and, and see all the benefits from that, but in the long term, I, I think it'd be interesting, it'd be essential to, to redo Fox Hill. But that's another story.
We, we.
But I.
On the record, when we took the finance and everything else, that that would be the first stage.
We did, and, and I think, I think to put in here, uh, that idea of Fox Hill, which is currently under renovation, is perfectly, perfectly appropriate.
Do, do you want to add, uh, that, uh, Fox Hill, which, which has converted to Section Eight already and is undergoing rehabilitation?
I think that's unnecessary detail. I think just to emphasize that, including the two hundred Fox Hill units um, already undergoing rehabilitation.
Very good. Anything else? All right, uh, number four. Uh, the first phase building, F one, should be six stories, and we'll, we'll, we'll see in the graphic that Torti Galus is to remind everyone what, where F one is and what we're looking at, should be six stories. Increased height in later phases, particularly along the west side of the main campus, could be appropriate. There was a request to include a variety of building heights in the concept plan to help with visualization and to convey that it will not necessarily all be homogeneous. Another big paragraph. All right, so the first, uh, the first item there, just to get everyone on the same page, six stories on the first building, right? Increased height in later phases along the west side of the main campus could be appropriate. And that variety of building heights, uh, request, uh, to help with visualization can convey that it won't be homogeneous, so.
This is a pit, this is a very, very piddly thing, admittedly, can we say could be deemed appropriate? Mark?
Oh, yeah, I, I was just rereading the sentence. Um, yeah, I, I, I don't see personally why it deemed would change the meaning of that sentence.
Usually hear that sentiment conveyed.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I have no problem putting that word in. Um, just getting my head around it. Okay. Okay, good. And anything else on number four?
Yes.
You had a comment.
Yeah, my, my, my only comment, and I'm not gonna defend it real strongly, is if we do six stories instead of eight or nine stories, the project itself, the completion of the project will take an extra couple of years, two or three years, at least, because we have fewer relocation units. That's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, just to get it on the record as well, I, I, I agree, Aaron, and, and, um, I'm hopeful uh, that we can find potential property elsewhere to make up that time somewhere along this process. Um, so let's keep our fingers crossed, and hopefully we can do that.
Good, thanks.
Here, 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 on that, you know, I'm, I'm very much into doing more, more peppering, instead of telling our residents that this is the only part of town we deem them worthy to live in. I think that's an awful message, so anything you could do, Councilman, to get us some, uh, ability to build elsewhere is, is.
Yes, sir. Working on it.
Job, good job.
Yeah, and I, I, I don't know of anyone here that's contrary to that whatsoever. I think that's sort of like the one-for-one replacement concept, right? Um, who can argue with that? Let's, boy, let's do it. I'd like nothing better. Thank you. Uh, number five. The preferred strategy is to replace existing units and house only existing residents for at least the first few phases. The F one building is an agreed-upon starting point. Mixed income should only be included when it takes care of the residents from the targeted existing buildings, and the mixed-income units are limited to units that are above those necessary to serve the households in the targeted buildings. Another big paragraph, right? So our strategy is replace existing units and house existing residents for the first few phases. By then, we'll be a number of years down the line, and we'll be doing, we may well be doing some different things, but our first core, one of our first core principles is to house our existing residents. As a result of that, it may be, number six, it may be beneficial to incorporate the Christopher Columbus Building as part of the second or third phase to prevent front-loaded concentration of public housing units in the north end of the main campus in the event that mixed-income units are introduced in later phases. And I think, I, I think when we get to the Torti Galus graphic, that's gonna come up here in a moment. Um, I, I think that will be kind of clear on, on what this, this concept means here. Um, and I think this idea that, um, Christopher Columbus is a, is a, is a great site uh, to start building the building and start using that as part of the relocation, I think is a real positive here. Um, so this was stated, it may be beneficial, just to repeat, to incorporate Christopher Columbus Building as part of the second or third phase to, and then front-loaded concentration of public housing units in the north end of the main campus. Uh, last seven later phases need flexibility in terms of unit counts, potential mixing of incomes and uses, and building height. Obtaining additional sites for replacement housing elsewhere in the city could help in dealing with the concentration of poverty. I thought that was a little repetitive from the other one, but I, I thought it was important to stick in there.
Yeah, I, I, I think once we go out to get the money, uh, all the loans and, and bonds, I think they want to know what the entire project will cost uh, and how we're gonna raise all that money. I don't know if we can go building by building.
May, do you have an opinion on that, uh, this idea? And what you're talking about, Aaron, is, is, is the whole project complete? Thirteen hundred fifty-four is everything, what that projection is, as opposed to just going into building F one and then into the first phase of relocation we're doing from F one?
Correct me, Jamie.
Oh, goodness, why didn't you put me on the spot here?
Yeah, why not?
So, um, you know, it's, it's not unusual for, uh, projects of the same na- nature to, uh, move forward in, 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 uh, phases. For example, um, a, a very large concentrated poverty area in Norfolk, Virginia, has three contiguous public housing properties with nineteen hundred units, seven, I'm sorry, seventeen hundred units. And the first phase is the only one that's been, uh, costed out and financed is, is, uh, Tidewater Gardens with six hundred and eighteen units. And, um, that got a HUD grant and it's gotten tax credit awards for three or four phases that are either under construction or, or in pre-development. So it, it's, uh, it's not uncommon to, um, to stage things as you go, because as, as, as your principals you're talking about here, talk about it, you're, you're, um, trying to keep some flexibility and things are gonna change with, with progress. You know, we, we had an interesting experience there where we were, we already actually had full, uh, site plans and drawings and everything. When the mayor came in and said, you know, we have these people who want to build a, uh, an arena where some of your plans are, what can you do to move things around and reshape things? So things just happen. So I, I think, I don't think, um, you know, it may, it may scare the Housing Finance Agency to know the extent of what you're looking at and how many, uh, allocations of, of bonds that you're gonna be looking for, but, uh, and we're gonna have a, an upcoming meeting with them. We'll lay that out. Uh, it, I guess if they, if they tell us at that meeting, we have to know what your total plans are and what the total cost is gonna be, we'll, we'll have to figure out how to respond to that.
And I think that somewhat goes toward Dave's point also, uh, is that by the time we, I'm calling it turn the corner and get over to the west side, the southwest side, near the light rail station, who knows who's gonna knock on our door at that point? Um, and, and say.
They're, they're all coming.
Well, yeah, that's right. We may want to build an office building here, so let's swap out something over in this part of the city that we own, um, so we could do something commercial over here and, and, uh, and, and get Dave's health clinic over there.
Just as a director, just as a quick aside here, in the last week, I've been in three different meetings with three different developers, and all three of them have referenced those properties on that side of the, on, on that side of the main campus.
We're getting the word out.
They would rather build, they'd rather build near a light rail station, right?
Well, they're, they're, yes, but they're, they're also unreasonable in their requests.
Yeah, well.
At least at this point, but.
That's how it always starts, Mike. I have. Need to bring them down to planet Earth.
Yeah, well, that's a good thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Valuable, it's a valuable chip, and, and you know, and, and especially because the, the street grid's gonna, I mean, it's not just the property right next to the light rail. When we redo the street grid, it's gonna open up those two properties directly to the north of the Second Street Light Rail, too. So you're gonna have three properties to, to barter with. And, and I really think, I mean, it's, you know, we're only a mile square community. It's not gonna be that much additional property, but if we get twenty, if we get a twenty percent bigger piece of property north of the Viaduct, let's say, as an example, because that's the most undeveloped swath of Hoboken, right? If we get twenty percent more property, twenty percent more acreage, it both, it both peppers and spreads out our population more, so they don't feel like they're, you know, we're tacitly telling them they could only live in one part of town. And that's one, and two, we get a little extra land, so, I mean.
Yeah, but we, we, we still don't, you, you're making an assumption that.
Yes, that's very true.
Residents don't want to live, uh, in, in, in one area that they've called home for their entire lives. And the second assumption, the second assumption that you're making is that they want to live by, Viaduct. Maybe they don't, maybe they don't want to live enough.
Not really. Point, point well taken, Andrew, but.
How is that not an assumption?
We're talking about the final stages where we would be talking about potentially growth.
Additional.
So this is, this is not the current residence. We're talking about, we're talking about additional capacity.
We also added that in the survey, if people, and we asked that question, if they would like to live in different. So that's part of the upcoming, so that's part of the survey that we just pushed out this week, so I think let's see what they say. We have to make sure we get enough people.
That's right. We need to get.
Great point.
Answers back. We need to get answers back and that survey done as soon as possible to see exactly what our residents want.
We're definitely working on that.
And, and, and I've said all along, I want to ensure that we're. And, and, and I've said all along, I want to ensure that we're going to replace our current units and that that's our current residence. So, you know, when we, when we talk about additional capacity, that becomes a citywide issue.
Sure. All right, let's get to it. Let's see it.
All right. So I'd like to turn it back over to, uh, Tordi Galus here. And I'm going to stop my share.
Oh, uh, thanks for walking us through this.
Let me make a comment if I will for a second, Mark. Uh, I've been taking notes on the changes that we would make in this, uh, memo that you did on the twentieth of January. And my comp, my contemplation of what will happen after this meeting is that I will do another draft. And I will make it into a resolution for consideration at the next regular meeting of the authority. Subject to further changes based upon the rest of this discussion and what may happen during the next two weeks. The idea would be that these would then become additional, we'll decide what to call them, but for, uh, purposes right now, additional guiding principles added to the ones that we previously adopted last summer. And they would then constitute further guidance to the planning group in terms of their preparation of their final effort over the next two months. If anybody has a problem with that at some point tonight, I'd like to hear about it because that is a large portion of what we're up to here to give guidance to the planning group so that they can take the next steps. And although we're not going to take action tonight, the purpose is to get on the table any issues that arise from the January twentieth memo. So that they don't go in a direction which is not going to be consistent with what the board wants to do.
Do, do we have the, the one page declaration that we went over back in June? Finalized, was that ever finalized and sent out? I, I asked the record or?
Yes, yes, it was, uh, Commissioner Vasco, absolutely. It was adopted, um, by the board. And it is available, if, sorry?
And it's also published on our website.
Okay, good.
It was stated June tenth, June tenth meeting of the authority. I'm sure that lords could send out additional copies. But the answer to your question, Andrew, is absolutely. It's a public document that has been adopted.
Thank you.
And we, we reference it as the development principles.
That's correct.
All right. You got me salivating over here.
Yeah, I, I think without further ado, uh, because uh, Harold said it best, uh, just, uh, you know, so we, we need everybody to be on the same page as we continue to put the document together. And I don't want to, I know Brian is itching to present it as well, and Mr. Russo, uh, uh, I'm not going to say anything more. Brian, take it away, please.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Um, can everyone see it? And can ever, can someone just?
Yeah, I'm seeing just a black screen.
Just a black screen right now. Oh, boy. Um, is, can Dave Stubble see, um, can he, can he share your screen, Dave? I've, I've been having, apologizing, having a, um, an issue with my screen sharing in this program. This is the second time this has.
At the black and white issue again.
Yeah, yeah.
I liked the green box earlier today.
Yeah, apologize. Um, Dave, it should just be the email that I sent out earlier.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Mc.
Just for that, I just want to.
I saw this summer.
Uh, I can talk a, a little bit more. Um, okay, there we go. Great. Can everyone see the screen? Yep.
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Apologize for that. Um, so, you know, I, I apologies to Dr. Russo. This isn't, this isn't going to be, uh, groundbreaking in a, in a new way necessarily, but a, a new way of looking at kind of the site overall. And the idea is that, and, and I just want to say thank you for everybody to, um, kind of especially last, uh, special meeting you guys had on the thirteenth. Um, it was very productive to kind of get these questions answered and for us to move forward. And so we took a look at that memo and, and all we wanted to do here is kind of, uh, illustrate what the, what those mean um, to the plan, right? And, um, so I'm, I'm just going to, I'm not going to go through them like, uh, Mr. Reco did earlier. Um, especially the ones that kind of are about unit ranges. Those are, those are, you know, very clear. Um, but we just wanted to talk about ways that we have, um, that we will start to communicate, uh, these principles in the reports and future presentations to allow um, ultimate flexibility in the, the plan, right? So we, the, um, the idea is, you know, F1 in this, this is kind of just an overall diagram to, for tonight, but F1, um, thank you, Dave, is, um, you know, colored in the most saturated color right now because that's kind of the, the clearest focus that we have, right? We can um, get cost estimation for that. We can start understanding the scope of that building. Um, and we'll, we'll, we'll speak more specific about that as we go on. Um, and then the, the buildings outlined in the red, uh, the red dash line kind of pertain to the, um, issue number five from the memo of, of replacing units, um, in housing only existing residents for the, the first few phases. So a, as we see it now, um, we, you know, we see that the first maybe three or four phases, um, are, are within this, this realm of the red. And, you know, you can see that's kind of a critical mass of buildings to get residents in and really see a sea change of, um, the perception of this community. Um, I think we're, we're still, um, you know, designing around Mama Johnson Field as the, the community hub and is the kind of the heart of, of the community. And so the buildings will take shape around there and, and create a, a great space, you know, wi- within that. Um, so another big part about a kind of a switch that we're going to be start to studying more now that we've kind of got some this very clear direction. And it was a very good idea to incorporate Christopher Columbus. Um, in our previous phasing plan, it was kind of brought in at the end and, um, not necessarily contributed to the early phases, not contributed to getting, um, some of the density off of Mama Johnson. I'm sorry, off of Jackson Gardens, uh, you know, in the beginning to kind of distribute a little bit more. Um, so what, what the, the plan will go ahead forward is, will be is to kind of use Christopher Columbus um, as a, as an earlier phase to get, uh, mo- more units there, you know, which, which would be built in appropriately scaled buildings. You know, that area is already infilled a lot with these, these building types and, um, I think would be, you know, appropriate to build the, those scales there. Keeping, keeping the open space that we've talked about before, but allowing for, um, more units to be built there that some, that they can clear out space, especially around E1 and E2D, um, to get those faces started and to get, to get people, um, you know, moved into new buildings. And so, um, that's, that's kind of a phase, that's, that's a new kind of, uh, strategy we're going to, we're going to, um, incorporate into the plan. So that's, I think it's a good one. Um, in, and then of course, um, you know, the Christopher Columbus residents that once they, they, they will be, need to be relocated temporarily when these buildings are built, um, there's, there's the plan is to have them actually, you know, um, housed in, in part of Jackson Gardens when F1 is built and, and people move into there first. They'll have the right to return, um, back to their, to their, um, Christopher Columbus at the end of the day. So that's, that's kind of a key principle that we'll repeat through. Um, the rest is, you know, and, and then essentially, once we get started with F1 and, and E1 and E2 and D, which is similar to the last phasing study that we really presented, um, we'll get to a critical mass of, um, of buildings where we think as a, a potential senior building on C can, can happen. Um, that can get, uh, one of, one of the senior buildings, um, that the residents of one of the senior buildings, let's say Monroe Gardens in this case, can move to C to allow us to substantially renovate or rehabilitate, um, Monroe Gardens and start that process, which is kind of a, at that point would be a parallel process with the new construction. But at that point, it also allow for, um, you know, um, the seniors to move back there or more seniors to move in there as well. Um, and also allow for Adams Gardens to, to kind of move out and get renovated as well. And then those two will, you know, will kick into the cash flow and, and kick, kick it into the equity of, of keeping the, um, the project sustainable in economic manner. Um, so those are all, you know, that's the kind of the moves. Um, and then graphically, so the, the, the other thing is we just want to acknowledge, we agree with, um, you know, a variety of building heights, a variety of building types, a variety of building, um, facades and, and breaking it up to be more of the neighborhood. But along the building heights, you can see here, we, we just, this is just for tonight, but we're illustrating um, additional height, potential height areas, um, in this kind of translucent orange. Um, you know, sometimes we call it a Jello, right? It's kind of a, a clear volume. In, in showing that along, um, the Palisades, along the kind of new, um, Resilience Park that's planned. Um, there's a potential for height, certainly for taller heights along that edge that would, would be recommended by us. It could be an, an easy sell to the community as it's, it's not, uh, directly affecting any, um, you know, existing parts of the community, but also kind of steps down from the Palisades. And it also allows, um, you know, views, a view shed from, from that additional height to the rest of Hoboken and beyond.
I want to enter a quick correction. There's nothing that's an easy sell to this community.
Okay, yeah, e- easier maybe is the term. Um, and I'm, I'm not guaranteeing that either, but, um, and then the other, the other thought is just, we're going to continue to study, but you know, obviously we, we were talking about earlier, but Block A being closest to the light rail station, closest to, um, significantly taller buildings is, 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 um, oh, an opportunity for, for the tallest, you know, possibility of height. So it, it kind of ramps down from the Palisades down to the Hoboken, um, to Jackson Street, but also, you know, Block A to Block D as, as a potential strategy. Um, and we will be able to diagram these in a clear kind of separate manner to, to make that clear. Um, and then the other, um, the other thing we're just doing, again, kind of thinking about focus and, um, near term focus versus long term flexibility. And the idea of, of kind of, um, getting specific about building F1 as, as the build first site. Getting more specific about maybe the next two phases, E1, E2D. Um, and then as you go, you know, even graphically, we're trying to show it here, F2 and B2 are kind of, uh, uh, you know, lightened in this drawing, right? And G and A are even lighter and, and more, uh, ghosted, we, we're calling it ghosted, but you know, clouded out because that is, um, we don't want to focus on the architecture there, knowing that a lot of different things could happen, especially if there are um, developments outside of the thousand forty property in the, in the mid to, to long-term future. Um, so those are just kind of some, um, ways to just illustrate these issues and there, and then we're going to take these issues that are now, you know, gelling into being direction. Um, and, and we're happy about that in, in, to, to go forward with the plan. Um, and, and I think that's all I wanted to say. So does anyone have any questions? Um, and the, the other thing is just to note that this is that, you know, i- is our baseline planning scenario, right, of, um, how many units we can get? Um, and then, you know, the idea is people can start to visualize, um, well, if we want to have, you know, five thousand units, whatever was thrown out earlier.
There you go. Now you're talking, Brian.
How do you, how do you start to, 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 to accomplish that, right? You can start accomplishing that by, by building some of these buildings bigger, by, you know, moving pieces around. And that's, that's kind of the idea that it's not, that's not the plan. Um, the plan is more realistic and then there are some, some mechanisms to make that happen in the future. I just talked about, i- i- if I could jump in, I'm sorry, everybody, um, just the phasing of how, again, how we're going to incorporate Christopher Columbus into those beginning phases as far as getting the residents from those buildings housed somewhere else. So I know the, the potential first phase of F1 would house, uh, the current buildings where E1 and E2 stand. Uh, and those, those residents would move into F1. Um, how do you incorporate CCG into the next phase? Or do you incorporate it even into the first phase? Yeah, it's a great, great question. Um, and we're still studying it, but what, what it looks like is so the, the cruci, you know, there's a cruciform buildings on Christopher Columbus, right? They're, they're about forty-eight units, forty-nine units each. Um, one of the buildings that people would be moving out of on, um, around E1 is that same exact building, uh, same unit mix, same, same bedroom count. You know, the way that they're laid out, they're just replicated. Um, and then there are, there's an additional buildings in E2 that those people would move out of. And one thought is that, um, the ninety-eight or so people in Christopher Columbus, or, or maybe it's, you know, broken into phases, you know, sub-phases. Um, right, could move to those buildings just until their buildings are built. And then the next phase would be, you know, demolishing Christopher Columbus Gardens, building those up. Christopher Columbus residents could move back to those units. Uh, and then we would also add, you know, I think, you know, it, just to, just as an example, we'd add like eighty more units there. Um, and those eighty units would then start to clear out, uh, other, other buildings and then we can start, you know, getting there. Yeah, I, I, I think you really have to really kind of move only one building, right? So i- i- it, it looks like that the way Christopher Colum, Christopher Columbus Gardens is presented in, in the picture. It looks like one of those buildings could probably house everyone who's on that site now. Uh, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah, so if you're only moving one building and demolishing to build the newer building, I think once the newer building is completed on, on CCG, you could probably move both buildings into that first building and then now you have a second building that could, could be underway. So almost like you said, a sub phasing of, of that one block. Yeah, that's an excellent point. So, so I don't think it would yield exactly double, but it's, you, you get to that point where you can then start getting a little more creative with options, right? Well, we can, we can make sure it yields double. Yeah. I mean, that's the beauty of it, right? I mean, we, i- if, if we're talking about, as it stands there, what is that, six stories?
Right.
Yes.
Right? I mean, if, if we could go a seven story or even an eight story and then have the, the second building smaller, right? Like, they don't have to be exact.
Um, what is the area around there?
I'm sorry, Erica.
No, I apologize. Is that a building you could go up to seven, eight or nine?
It's eight, what is it, seven now?
It's seven now.
It's seven now, so could you go up to nine? Would it match the other areas? Would it match the buildings in the, look, in the neighborhood where you're not going too high?
I, I think.
But you're getting more for your value. You're getting more to, to be able to move more people faster because I think people want to see us that we're moving, we're using our space efficiently.
Sure. Yeah, I, I, I think so. I think, I think that's an easy sell, to be honest with you. I've been doing this for a long time. Um, you know, uh, uh, it's the way you present it. It's the way people understand what the overall goal is. Uh, and what the community, with the, what the surrounding neighborhood's going to look like. So just the change of the building is going to enhance that neighborhood. The way we have the cut through in the middle of the block plus the additional open space uh, in those C-shaped buildings, you're going to have, you're probably going to double the amount of open space you have there that's accessible, not only to residents in the buildings, potentially residents outside the buildings. Um, you know, I, I think you could sell that easy, Erica. I think that's an easy. That's a really good, that's a really good strategy. I, and I, and I think we'll, we'll, we'll take that into account. That's part of our, our, literally like the next thing to study and, um, and if we could present a solution that is a taller building there that gets everybody moved in, um, or or some sort of, you know, partial, you know, o- other options. Sure. That would be a similar, similar idea. Yeah, I mean, uh, honestly, uh, there's, I mean, I look at that and I see fifteen different options there that, that are all, I think viable and, and easily sellable to the surrounding community. Yeah, and, and that, and that goes back to the, that goes back to the earlier point that Aaron made about the timing of this. If you can make up half that time with that parcel, then, you know, th- that, that saves us down the road a little bit more. So, yeah, I think there's a lot of options there.
If, if I may, in terms of the title to that property, I should point out that all those parking spaces that are around the edge.
Yes.
Are technically mostly the Housing Authority's property. That's not the street necessarily.
Correct.
Which means that when we dig in, sorry?
You could recreate the block.
Yes, exactly. We need some help from the city. Um, I will say Councilman Russo in this case, but there is definitely the opportunity, I've talked to Mr. Reco about that already, of expanding our footprint to reflect that parking. In which case, the comment that we might be able to put all of the units into half of the location, I think is very workable.
Yeah. So do I. Just to full disclosure. Just to full disclosure, we've we've come, we've already expanded those parking spaces in this current plan. We already, we already assumed that we could. Harold, we already assumed that we could grab those those spaces, knowing that it was on the land. We've, we've, I think you actually brought it.
I think that, I think then at some point, Susan, and perhaps if you're involved, you. We should talk about that because it's a little bit more complicated than assuming.
Yeah, no, I I agree.
Purposes of tonight operate on the assumption that we can draw the block. To look like all the other blocks, and that's our property.
And and that's what we presumed, for better or worse. We're a presumptuous crew sometimes.
Alright, good. Like it.
That was a, that was a great, a great question, Dr. Russo. Thank you for bringing that. We'll we'll incorporate, we'll study that.
Was there a reason why that wasn't thought about?
Um, it was, it was. So, okay, so we're, you know, again, we are, and perhaps. We should shake out of this a little bit, knowing the construction costs, but we. If you look at all the buildings around around there, they're all six stories for for an economic. I'll I'll go ahead and say it because it's, that was the cheapest way to build at the time, right? They probably would have tried to go taller if they could. Or there's some, you know, there's some pressure to keep it at that level. So we were, we were looking at these at this level, and we also are looking at realistic. You you know, replacement unit counts and things like that. But you know, when we get the direction from issue number. Two, the apartment size mix can be adjusted to account for current and under over house conditions. That allows us to get a little more specific on on what could be replaced there, especially if it's in an earlier phase. We can get a little more realistic about that. So that's, we were, we were being, perhaps we were being conservative at the first pass. But I know Dave, Dave Stumble brought that up, you know, we were talking about that as a as a. As a potential option, it's just doing one or two.
Yeah, we had brought that up early in the process, as a matter of fact, and then came back around to the six story model and so. So we've got some, you know, there's been some push and shovel a- as this has developed. And as we come back around to those ideas, I think we'll be ready to plug them in.
Yeah, and and it goes to, just, I just wanted to summarize the. When we start these baseline studies, we don't want to assume that we can do nine story buildings in a place that doesn't have any to start, right? We don't want it to blow up in our face immediately. So we try to get, I try to be as realistic and pragmatic as possible. But, you know, knowing, getting gathering more information about the possibilities is where we can then start injecting that, those plans. But that's kind of.
And also, we are here to hear your input on these diagrams. And just as Brian talked about. Using the Brian's phrase of sort of the the Jell-O. The see-through bit, we could certainly add that here as a concept. And then run the scenarios and see about how tall one of these would have to be. To to replace all the units, and we can bring that option back to you.
And well, the part, the point that I just want to add to is that. You know, we were also the six story base limit. I just want to say that this also was a result of meetings that the design team had early on. With with the stakeholders. And in particular, I'm talking about the stakeholders that are residents. Of the current housing authority property. And that's where we heard the comment of. Well, we want to have building types that are just like the surrounding context area and. You know, if we see six story there, why can't we have six story? And so that was also us listening to the comments that we heard. And then just starting again with that six story height as a base.
Well, we'll also take into account, you know, the very realistic pressure of parking. And, you know, the taller you go, the less parking. You provide per unit. And and, you know, Christopher Columbus is much further away from a transit stop. Than Jackson Kid, you know, to make the argument that you could go lower. So th- these are the things that we we weigh when we. We make these decisions.
Understood.
Thanks. Good question, another good, great question, so keep.
In phase one. We're talking about any retail ground floor?
Yeah, the the nature of that building in particular. You know, we we want to get a good lobby, there might be some space left over for an amenity. We were trying to get some parking in there to to make that real, acknowledging that we're actually taking. A parking lot away from the project, right? Have to figure out some some excess land to to do that too, to to replace that stuff, but that was kind of part of it. But, you know, once, again, once we. Once this plan goes ahead and and that building becomes, you know, in the in the the next couple of years, when this is forward, you know. The architects, you guys will take another snapshot of that and see what's available, what's what's realistic in that in that. Sense. But at the moment, I don't think we were placing any retail there, like commercial space there.
Which makes sense to me anyway, so it's. It's fine, I just want to put it out there.
And you know, if you remember our, our. Kind of the the urban design diagram we presented last time, kind of the overall site. We were thinking closer to the light rail station, perhaps on Third Street, you know, as a kind of a corridor that that would kind of capture everything. You know, there there might be some opportunity in the earlier phases to provide some some daily services. Acknowledging that there's going to be a lot of residents around Mama Johnson Field. You know, those are things we can talk about.
Yeah, I I I just for me, I mean, just, and I know the phasing is far away, but F two seems like a more. Appropriate ground floor retail, especially because it would be right across from more ground floor retail. I think that makes sense. And then even potentially, ground floor on E one. Might make some sense, at least the portions of the building. That are facing Mama Johnson, so not even on the street side. Maybe, you know, a smaller little kind of cafe or a corner store kind of type of thing. You know, you're at Mama Johnson Field and, you know, your kids tugging on your shirt and he wants a soda and a bag of chips, you know.
Yeah, we we like frozen frozen yogurt shop kill there, right?
The eyes on the park concept too.
Yeah, activating the park, that's right, that's right. And you know, that's something that we haven't talked about a lot, but I think we want to explore a little bit in the next few weeks. It's just. The potential for Mama Johnson Fields, you know, I think it'll it'll want to include a lot of resident input. We're we're proposing expanding it slightly towards Building C, right? From what it currently is, the. The the headquarters building will be, you know, moved to one of the ground floors of one of these buildings. So, you know, what what is, what can Mama Johnson Field become? Larger than it is now, you know, is it more flexible uses, is it? You you know, different types of playgrounds, different freight, different age groups, that kind of thing. But I think it's a very important piece that we've been. Not addressing directly because of all these these programmatic questions, but. We won't be discounting that in the final report.
Awesome. I love that.
Yeah, and if I can just add about Mama Johnson Field and just all of the open spaces. This is where, to Brian's point, this is where it'll be looking at. The bigger picture of just the outdoor amenities and how they tie together to create a a place. Because you're also going to have along the Palisades, the resilience area. That we're planning there. So, again, that's going to be, you know, serve a dual role. As well as an amenity as, you know, addressing or helping to assist in dress, addressing some of the flood conditions. That currently exist in the area.
Here, I I got a great get back at people for treating our housing authority like an afterthought. Put a, put a housing authority exclusive outdoor pool there.
Yeah, there's room for some.
You could store a lot of rainwater there, too. Make it a salt water pool.
I have a question on the senior buildings as well. Are those? Additional buildings? Not the renovated portion, but the additional portion, is that happening in phase one as well?
I think it would happen. Yeah, maybe not, it it would happen when they would be substantially renovated. I I don't know if it would make sense to disrupt. That's our current thinking, that's something we can look into, but. You know, they're 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 meant to offset the, when we renovate those senior buildings. The the current one, you'll lose a lot of studios. It's the, you know, you can't build studios anymore. So you'll end up. Losing some units, and those were, those were, the thought of those would be kind of recapture some of the the units on the same side. So it's kind of like.
Yeah, no, I I understand that, but what I'm saying is, are are those, are those? Buildings being built and then the residents are being moved into those newer portions? And then the older portion gets renovated, or is it? Is it different? Almost like there's a a phasing within the site itself.
Yeah, so I think, sorry, this is Shannon. So I think, Brian, when you explained it to us earlier. It seemed like the elderly building would go up maybe as part of like phase three or four. Christopher Columbus would come first. And then the senior building would go up. And then the residents from Monroe or Adams, whichever goes first, once the senior building is built. They would move over to this senior building either as temporary or permanent relocation, whatever they want to do. Like, if they want to go back to their original Monroe or Gardens, once it's rehabbed, then they can do that. So, does that help a little bit?
Well, it it helps a little bit, but I'm I'm going to make a suggestion. I personally, again, going back to the concept of getting our housing authority residents. In other areas of the city. I love getting some seniors onto our main campus. At the same time, I would love to get some of our family units at potentially one of the senior sites. But I think if, and and correct me if I'm wrong, those grayed out buildings are the newer portions?
The the blue buildings are the old buildings, actually, that's the tower.
I'm sorry, correct.
The other ones were kind of these, you know, infill portions that. Would would just kind of offset the loss if it was a senior building. Now, that being said, let's say. You know, Monroe moves to Building C, and then Adams moves to Monroe after that's substantially renovated. Then Adams, in theory, doesn't have. You know, I don't think the seniors in C would move back there necessarily. We were, we were, we understand that your population is aging and there are a lot of, you know, demand for. Perhaps another senior building, but, you know, maybe, maybe a couple of years down the line. It changes a little bit in that. Maybe when you start to think about what Adams is, it becomes something else. So, you know, a mixed building. You know, so that that's a possibility. And then I guess that would be, it might change the unit mix there, but.
So so you think that the the additional buildings on those two senior sites really just offset? The change from studios to one bedrooms?
And I think the. While we're doing the substantial renovation in the existing building, the new buildings go up at that same time.
Right, okay, I got you. I just wanted to understand, I was I was hopeful that we might be able to swing more units and.
Yeah, yeah, we looked at that, and you know, honestly, the the both sites are not square sites. And, you know, if you could get a couple of properties in the corridor. You know, one of them actually is a is a parking lot, but I think it's owned by the Catholic Church, a Catholic church. You know, you could then see more efficient buildings there that would get more units, but we were, again, just trying to kind of. Be realistic on that.
Yep, no, I understand fully. Okay, thank you.
We have, um, you walk us through like an accurate timeline here?
I don't know if I can, but does anyone else want to?
And maybe it's not, maybe it's not the right time to be.
Yeah, I would say. We want to get towards that, but I think we want to provide you with a good, a better, more accurate version. As we go forward, but you know, there, I know Susan and and John from Higher Grour. Are more expert in the in the New Jersey state processes and especially the the. Approval processes, both in Hoboken and the state of getting this. Plan of plans approved, you know, it takes takes time. And then. Beyond that, it's it's about financing and things like that. So I, I personally don't, can't speak to it, but does anyone else want to add on to that?
No, I I think that that's that's correct, because it's just so so many other factors, but. You know, I think as you get further along, you can probably give some very, very rough estimates. But the other, you know, factors, Brian, that you've thrown in there is just the timing of bringing on. You know, how you want to develop this, is this when in conjunction with a private developer. As Brandon also mentioned, the funding and how you, how you just move forward with these, with this process. And then the other indicator that just looms out there from time to time is just how the economy acts. So. You know, that's also going to play into it.
And re- remind me, do we need to, from the city's perspective, do we need to do a redevelopment zone here?
Yes.
Yes, so.
Comment on that. If if the authority is going to have the maximum amount of flexibility. To achieve all of these goals, it would be very beneficial for the authority. To have a redevelopment or multiple redevelopment plans for all of its locations. That is something that the authority as an entity would want to have if it could. And that is something that the planning people have contemplated all along that they would want to do.
Okay, so.
Let me, let me interject. An area in need of rehabilitation designation too.
Uh, if you do an area of of redevelopment, you don't need the rehabilitation.
Yeah, what I mean, rehabilitation, it just gives the assurances to people that we're never gonna. That that it's going to be used for what it's used for.
You could, yeah, you could do a non-condemnation. So there there's.
That's why I say rehabilitation instead of.
So you could do a non-cond- condemnation. Re. Uh, redevelopment area, uh, which would assure the same thing. Uh, which gives you the ability then to go into a longer term pilot, which is probably what we want to talk about for funding of this site. Uh, you can also do a redevelopment plan, which will give you the envelope. Uh, and and what I would suggest is probably do four different plans, one with the main campus. One for each of the senior buildings and then one for CCG. And do that in the form of a of a non-condemnation, uh, re- redevelopment plan. And we can make those plans pretty. Uh, pretty flexible to 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 give us the ability to build what we want and have the the flexibility in. Some of the shifting things that that are going on. Again, put my council hat on, I think I could, I I think if that's the plan, again, for time's sake. We should start having those conversations, because I would love to get those plans in place before. We do anything, right? Like, we could start working on those plans with the Community Development Director and or Head of Housing. Vanessa Falco, and get that before the council, probably within the next quarter, if we really move quickly.
Yeah, I just, I I look back, Mike, at the. The whole New Jersey Transit situation, and the city took the stance that it was best to. Even though it was a state agency that owned the property, that was best to do a designation of an area, I believe it was rehabilitation. It wasn't like we were ever going to condemn the land of New Jersey Transit, right? But there was a. And then when you have a designation of an area in need of rehabilitation versus. Redevelopment, you take condemnation in most scenarios off the table, and you you still do the redevelopment plan. And then you don't have to adhere to the underlying zoning because. And then you don't have to adhere to the underlying zoning because.
Yeah, the only problem with that is then you're then you're limited with your, with your pilot. Which we need for for funding.
But you're you're always limited with pilots, so anyway.
Yeah, but ten years and thirty years is very different.
Oh, so rehabilitation, there's a, there's a lesser.
Only ten, I think the max is ten.
Yeah, you know, I think you're right.
So that would be. And sorry to bog everybody down with this, I apologize. I'm just thinking, I'm I'm just, I got my other hat on there for a minute, sorry.
It's necessary, Mike, because we're not, we're not, we don't have some special status as a landowner to just ignore zoning laws, so.
Right, right, true.
We understand that, you know, we we can't just.
And the, and the.
I don't know about the rest of the. I was just gonna say, I don't know about the rest of the folks on this call, but this is not something that I find bogging down eventually. This is absolutely crucial for the authority to move forward. The planners have been told that they should prepare a framework. For the overall redevelopment effort, whatever documents they're gonna be. Let's just say it's gonna be redevelopment plans for various locations.
Right.
But in order to actually get to the point of having the power to do a lot of the things that the authority wants to do. For example, being a redevelopment entity so that we can pick partners. It would be very important for us to move as soon as the first effort is done here. In the direction of the city who's gonna have to guide us is what we can do on these plans. So I agree completely that that it's an important discussion.
I will start this conversation as early as tomorrow morning.
Yeah, and we've 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 had meetings with the city on this already, right? I mean, we've, you know, we're, they're aware of our.
Oh, yeah, they're they're absolutely aware. I wanna move that, I wanna move that from awareness to action, right? Like, I want.
Yeah.
I want our professionals from the city's perspective to start looking at the um. What the plan needs to look like, what that that maximizes our flexibility, maxes our, maximizes our pilot situation. Uh, have the ability to kind of move as at a at a warp speed. Uh, so that the city is not slowing down the authority at any point. Right? If we need, if we as an authority have to step on the brakes for something, I want us to be able to make that decision. Not have it the other way around where the city's holding it up, so.
That's an excellent point.
Yeah, I will, I will speak to Vanessa Falco and Director Brown. Um, tomorrow, probably before the afternoon, so I'll I'll get that ball rolling as fast as possible.
And we do have a meeting uh, with our planners and the city planning group and the mayor on uh, on next Tuesday as well. That we've got set up, so that's perfect timing for you to have those conversations in anticipation of our meeting Tuesday.
Awesome. That works.
Yes, it does. Music to my ears. Very good.
Can we get it, can we, can we kind of sum up what what the next, because I have a little, you know, forgive me, but. Does seem like, uh, not that we're disorganized, but. A lot of open-ended things here. We'd be going at this for a little bit now. I'm real, I'm I'm kind of uh, not concerned, but. You know, what, can someone give me a clear picture of our our next steps here and where we're going? This meeting tonight seemed a little similar to the last time we met with you guys. Um, at least to my eyes, I I I'm looking at a very similar picture and. Talking about a lot of the similar stuff. Good points brought up by uh, Councilman Ro- Russo to add to the flavor here, but. Uh, we're not really getting any more design pictures and buildings and we still don't have a survey done by the residents and. Stuff's like lagging, it's starting to lag a little bit and uh. We're not, I'm not seeing a lot of deliverables and getting things done quicker. Uh, let me remind everyone, these buildings are falling down, right? Right? We all know that. And I think we should get a, I don't know, I just, I think the speed of this should be going and now, now we're. We don't even know if we need to have redevelopment, we need to get that going, uh. Funding, I'm I'm hearing a lot of open-ended questions about funding and total cost and. Whether or not the New Jersey agency is going to require that or not. So, can someone kind of put this all back into a good momentum forward here and? Kind of lay out a nice little uh, six-month vision?
So I think it was, it was really crucial. I think the the reason we wanted to do some repetition tonight, Commissioner, was to make sure we we agreed on these. Next development principles that we had, that 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 we all agree as board, that we can come to the next board meeting. And publicly pass these in a resolution format, which does a couple of things. It puts us closer to finishing our plan. Um, it 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 then indicates agreement on the board and it gives direction to our planners to start polishing off the plan. Um, I I think that that's just been crucial. These are some of the final questions we need uh, before the. Plan can be finalized. So I I think it was important to do some repetition here tonight. To make sure everyone understands where we are and what we agree on. We agree on the sixth story for the first building, we agree on. Uh, the one-for-one replacement, we agree that our residents are gonna be moved first. Those are, those are really crucial things to do. So, once that is, that is in place, our planners have four to six weeks. Uh, to start putting together the final plan and give us the draft. Um, so, so we're getting really close to having that that plan out there. Um, and and to be giving you a a draft of that, uh, just by the nature. Of of of, yeah, I'm getting some feedback, just by the nature of this, once we have that plan in place. The board is then committed, we have stated what we wanna do, we then officially are approaching the city. Um, on which direction we wanna go, uh, with some of the discussions that were with Chairman Mello and and. And Dr. Russo right now, on whether we do a redevelopment zone or whether we do an area in need of redevelopment. We're obviously having conversations ahead of time with that. Uh, by the way, the resident survey has been published, it's on our website now. Um, so we will have the results of that resident survey, our deadline is February twentieth to have the results back. But you can get on our website now, uh, we did all the flyers of there being. Uh, no, there's no incentive, like, like, we're gonna give you five bucks if you, if you fill it out.
Is there, um, is there a certain amount of survey respondents that we require in order for us to even consider it?
No, we haven't set up any, at this point, we haven't set up any minimum requirement for responses.
I think it's.
I thought they were getting a free session with you, Andrew, for basketball.
Um, so Monday's, Monday's resident meeting, we had, uh. Like, I don't know, a handful of residents on the call. Um, so I, you know, I think we have to really push the boundaries here and creatively. Figure out a way to get as many respondents as possible. We can't accept, you know, if we get twenty-one respondents back. That that's a survey, right?
Sure, sure, then we're gonna have to.
I think you would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah, and I think our. We're really rolling out our PR on this, yeah, Barbara?
Andrew, I spoke to the director, one of the things that Hope has um, said that we would do is, as you know, we see a lot of the residents. Come to us, whether it's to use the computers or for any services that we use. So while they're coming into our office, once we assist them, we we are going to be asking them, please take a moment and complete. Survey. If it's an elderly person that comes in, because we do see a lot of elderly, then we will assist them with it. Um, with making sure that they, you know, that it's completed. Um, what I have not seen, um, Director, is I haven't seen the flyer. And to be honest with you, I wasn't even aware that it's on the, on the actual website. A nick still hasn't gone out about it being on the website. Um, so I think we have to do better with advertising it. I think we should also, all of us, I know, um, um. Erica, I know you do it, I know Michael, I know you, you probably, you too, but we have to also use our personal, um. Social medias to kind of get the word out there to to, for the people that live down here to say, listen, guys, take a minute. And 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 fill it out, because that's the only way you're going to get these people to do it, unless we did a door-to-door. Thing and and have them completed.
Is that an option?
Hmm, sure it is.
Yeah, I, if I could, I was, I was actually thinking if we gave it a couple of days to see what kind of response we got back. And then because it's gonna be specific to where it's coming from, we can then do a final sweep just floor to floor. Because I think that what Shannon did with the, with the presentation. Uh, I was actually gonna speak to you guys about this. I think it would be, I think it would be very beneficial. For each building to be approached floor by floor, like we did when we converted from RAD. Um, we had a floor-by-floor meeting where we actually had all the tenants come out to the lobby of each floor. They signed their new lease, but kind of something like that where we make it mandatory, they have to come to the front, explain them really quick. The, uh, like in a nutshell of Shannon's presentation, and then have them fill out the survey. And we can get, we can get a hundred percent participation if we make it part of, like, that's what we expect of them.
Yeah, great idea, great idea.
Sounds good.
So, so just to get back to, so four to six weeks. Uh, planners will have a final version for us, for our review, correct?
Yeah, that's our plan at this point. Troy, how how are you feeling about that statement?
Yeah, I would say, um, yeah, uh, because I feel like we walked away, but we will walk away with uh. The direction we need. Um, you know, as long as there's not something that comes up later on to just throws a a bridge in it. But yes, the the goal is four to six weeks from now. Um, as we continue to move forward, we we would have a draft document for your review.
Be to be able to review and vote on a draft document in March, correct?
That that's our, that's our goal.
Well, certainly, the March tenth. Housing Authority meeting, I would contemplate that the plan as produced by the planners would be available for the authority. The discretion is still with the authority board as to whether or not they would then sanction it at the March meeting. But if it's acceptable, it would be very helpful if we could do that.
Right, so walk, keep walking me through that. So let's just say March tenth, we we approved that plan, what's what's the next step?
Um, I I just think that it goes back to what Mr. Recko was saying, um. From there, it's gonna be, you know, whatever uh, uh, city. Planning redevelopment process that you're gonna have to go through as 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 your next step.
At at some point, we have to bring on developers and architects to. Correct. Know what the campus will will look like. These are renderings that that will show us how we get capacity. In the buildings and on the campus.
Right, and remember, these are, these are block renderings that you're looking at right now, right? When when we have, when we have architects and and and. And developers in the room, this, these block buildings are gonna look very different, very.
Come alive.
And we have.
Exercise, it's just.
Yeah, and 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 honestly, we have. I I mean, there's a, there's a ton of of people who could help on this project uh, as we move along, so. I'm I'm excited about this, I'm more excited every day.
Yeah.
What's um, what's a, what's a estimate of time in your, in your other projects? The, between the redevelopment and um, city, you know, agreements. And then getting the developers and architects.
Yeah, that, that that varies. I gotta be honest with you, I'll I'll give you.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about the 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 experts in the room here.
Oh, I thought you meant Hoboken. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I think Jaime and I can speak to that. Um, this is Shannon, so. Basically, once the board decides on a path forward. Um, at that point, they're gonna want, because there's procurement rules involved here with the housing authority. Um, they'd have to put out an RFP for a development partner. Um, and so that process would probably take, oh gosh. A hundred and twenty days maybe to find a development partner, maybe a little bit longer.
Um. Uh, Shannon, I I think we have to make clear too that not every phase of this will be done at the same time.
Correct, right, so you.
That's the reason why we've prioritized building F1 and certain of those RFPs will happen before others. We're thinking of it as a constant iterative step here. The first ones could start this year. And it'll also include the RFPs with respect to financing assistance. Uh, but we are going to be at the process of selecting people and moving forward on issues. For quite some number of years here. I think you can assume the rest of this decade.
It's a safe bet. Yeah, so for the initial phase, I mean, the idea is that you would put out an RFP for someone that could potentially help you with the first. Several phases, it doesn't make sense to have a different development partner for each phase. Um, but that development partner will take the lead on doing all of the third-party. Um, reports that need to be done, hiring the architect, everything's in conjunction or in um. Collaboration with the housing authority, but there, we're just like at the very beginning of this process. So. Once there's a, an approved sort of, this is how we're moving forward, then there's a whole bunch of other steps. That goes with hiring a development partner and all of the third-party folks that go along with that.
Shannon, I have a question for you. Um, do we have the ability to hire multiple development partners?
Um, not in, well, you do, but you wouldn't do that initially, like, that's.
I think what Shannon's saying is that if we hired somebody to do the initial phases.
Right.
That are e- very much meshed, we probably would wanna have one development partner, but the answer to the commissioner is eventually. Yes, very much so. We can hire different development partners, we can hire different architects, we can mix and match as we go forward and we learn.
Yeah, because, again, just because the um, the phasing outside of the main campus. We may want that running on the, on parallel tracks.
Hmm.
Um, and having two different development partners might be a a smart idea. Uh, and then again, it might not, I don't know, but uh, I just wanna be able to keep my options open and and if we can, great. It's it's.
The first thing I'm gonna be concerned about is whether or not any development partner can deal with. An entire package, and I think you're gonna find the answer is no matter how big they are. This is gonna be a very big project and you don't wanna put all of the eggs in one developer basket.
Yep.
Uh, I've been through too many issues with performance bonds, no matter how big they are. To uh, wanna rely upon one outfit if it gets bogged down.
Yeah, I agree.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of just design and aesthetic things that would would support that as well, that you wanna get more than one person on board. Because, you know, the 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 vision for how this is gonna look is, is better off. If you, if you're looking for variation, uh, uh, you know, it's better off having other eyes looking at it.
Right, sure.
You know, I I wanna remind everybody, we we want nobody to get displaced, which means we have to get F1 going. Before we can get the ball rolling. I mean, F1 is the, is the initial component that has to happen before this thing really gets moving. Because then nobody.
Let let me comment on how we approach um. Multiple buildings being redeveloped at the same time in other um, large-scale redevelopments. So, we we look at when, when the given phases will close. And we look at the uh, annual turnover rate of residents and we back up. How many months, we figure out how many months it's gonna take to get a third of the units vacant. Let's say you're gonna do a renovation at at one of the senior buildings. Uh, how many units you need to have vacant in order to turn over a third of the units to a developer? So, you could have a rehab going on that didn't require you moving residents to another location. At the same time that you're tackling your, your F1 uh, building, just as an example, I'm not suggesting. That pairing, but uh, that's the kind of thing uh, that is frequently done. Uh, Baltimore is a good example, they went out for. Uh, they did a pre-qualification for developers and then the secondary RFP process, they assign one or two. Properties to each developer and I think they had five or six projects going on simultaneously, now that. They they were separate locations and how you have to really figure out how you're gonna handle the. Relocation without having to relocate people to private properties off-site. Uh, that's more challenging for you than it is for a lot of other authorities, so. So those are some issues that could go into how you. So those are some issues that could go into how you would sequence project and get. Potentially get some multiple projects getting worked on at the same time by one or more developers.
I have a question and um, I know you guys spoke earlier about maybe making the o-. More open space towards where the Mama Johnson Field is and so forth, I was thinking, has anybody thought about making and. Sort of like like a recreation center on the housing property, meaning like having indoor basketball courts. Um, um, making it, you know how now we have community rooms across the Housing Authority, maybe making it in the. That same center where it could also be used as a community room, it could be rented for meetings. Um, have have we thought about something like that? Because I know we have a basketball court now, but it's outside, so winter comes, kids are not playing. And I know that the city has their center across the street, but let's be real, how often are. Our residents allowed in there to play?
Um, yeah, th- thanks Barbara, I just, I just wanna say, yeah, we we've considered it in our kind of our larger urban design diagram, we kind of located. You know, potential spots for amenity, we call them amenity spaces, but it would, that that could take the form of a um, kind of a site. Uh, you know, community room or community center, the the bottom of of um, building C. Uh, you know, in my mind, would be a great one, cause it's on the park, there's not, you know, currently not a street in front of it, so. You could see that spilling out and having events kind of um indoor and outdoor. Um, and and that would also have a, you know, that building has an opportunity to have much lower parking demand, being being a senior building. Um, so yeah, we've we've looked at it and that was a big part, a a lot of really good feedback we received from. Um, the 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 multiple resident meetings we have attended, including the the two big ones in person, um. That that was a huge feedback that we we really liked hearing, um, the need, the need for that kind of stuff.
And then my next question is, when when we were discussing Christopher Columbus, that's a whole block, right? So I, Michael, I'm kinda thinking like seven seventy, I know that's not a whole block, that's obviously more blocks, but if. We if we had the ability to move those people and just build. Even obviously, we wouldn't be able to build like seven seventy that big, but build big enough where we're able to. To put everyone back in there and then add additional um apartments, is that something that you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the plan.
That, yeah, and and Barbara, to to your point, I mean, that's exactly what, uh, specific to that one block, that one site. I see like the amenity spaces in those two buildings as as depicted there. I think will be. Huge in comparison to what's there now, right? Uh, I think you could put so much for the residents just on that block. That is, you know, I mean, because it's a satellite type of 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 a building, but back to the main campus, I mean. When I look at that whole project, I mean, building C for me is the. It's like the main hub, at least the way I envision it, right? I I think our offices should be there as far as the Housing Authority, I think there should be event spaces there for our residents, larger event spaces. Uh, each building could have its own as well, but you know, if somebody wants to, you know, do a party for their son's first birthday. Uh, you know, and they wanna invite a a hundred people, well, I I think we should have some some spaces for that, right? Um, like like a lot of the other buildings all across Hoboken, um, and to Dave's point earlier. You know, why, why can't we talk about potentially putting a pool in for our residents? I I mean, I think those are things that. You find the right development partner and you and you can maximize those sites. You can offer those amenities to our residents, which I think is sorely needed. And and that's what I envision, that's why, you know, those those buildings, especially along the Palisades. I'd love to put some height there because I think that yields us more in terms of what we could give back to our residents. In terms of our sustainability as an authority, I mean, those are all the things that. You know, developers all across Hoboken, they build bigger, why? Because it makes them more money, right? It allows them to give more back to the city because we we require it as a city, so. You need to look at it from the same perspective and and the beauty of it is, we own the land, right? That's our, that is our ace in the hole, so to speak, so I'll get off my soapbox, I'm sorry.
I have one last question and I don't think we've touched on this, but I had a resident ask me just recently about it. Uh, being, once we move, once all this redevelopment starts and people start moving, they were thinking. Well, what's going to happen, um, like right now, we don't pay the light and electricity, um, yeah, electricity and gas, we don't pay that. So they're like, well, once we move to this, is that going to be our responsibility? And to be honest, I was kind of stuck, I didn't know what to say because. That I don't think that's something that we really discuss, like I don't know what's gonna happen, is it gonna stay the same way? Um, you know, where they don't see a difference, or is it somehow going to be incorporated into their rep? I don't know, I don't know, can someone explain that?
Can give it a shot.
Cause I think there's some choices to be made here.
Well, yeah, so utilities are always a complicated subject, but. So you, so we're going to convert from public housing to section eight, right? And so, under both programs, with the exception of flat renters. Um, the resident is expected to pay thirty percent. Of their income, here, I'll put my camera on so you can see me, um, thirty percent of their. Adjusted gross income towards rent and utilities. So, again, it's hard to explain, but right now your utilities are included. So every month you send a check to the Housing Authority for thirty percent of your adjusted gross income, basically. Um, if there were a switch in the responsibility for who pays the utilities. Um, they would incorporate what we call utility allowance, and so it's kind of like what the average person would pay for utilities. And that's part of the calculation of what you pay, so. If you're responsible with your utilities, you still are gonna pay thirty percent of your adjusted gross income. For rent and utilities, it's kind of the easiest way I can explain it right now, but um.
Well, that that was the question, because they were on the meeting and they said, well, we're talking about how we're switching. From from section nine to section eight and section eight voucher holders do pay for their own electric, like they. I I think they get a allowance from that, from from housing.
Yeah. Yeah, so we should make a note at the next resident meeting to kind of explain that a little bit better, we don't know what the end result is gonna be. But the intention is that it would remain consistent with what's going on right now.
But it would not require an additional payment from the. So the resident, if a decision is made to have the residents pay their own utilities. Then they pay less rent to the authority, the same amount that they would be paying for their utilities, basically.
So right, the check that you pay to the Housing Authority would be less because now you're paying your own utilities.
Gotcha, so.
I think Shannon explained it very well, the only problem with Shannon's explanation is the lurking little issue. Of what happens if you've got somebody that really likes it hot or goes out all the time and leaves their lights on. It is theoretically possible that the actual amount that they would have to pay. Would be in excess of those calculations. Because the calculations are all based upon a utility allowance based upon average uses. And you will find that some people will exceed the average usage.
Yeah, I I I.
And that happens in public housing where, where if they have submetering, for example, and and the. Authority gives a utility allowance, if tenants exceed that, then the authority bills them for the overage. That they went over their utility allowance, so it puts more.
Other public housing authority units, that's not what our current circumstance is, so our tenants would be surprised with that.
Uh, understood, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, that uh, that that is um, a reality in many housing authorities.
In other places, the point is Barbara's point, which is, that's not their current expectation.
Well, uh, I mean, the the assumption here also is that the new buildings are more efficient, I'm sure there's ways to build in. Uh, some safeguards, um, you know, uh, different types of uh lighting and and on and off switches and, you know. Things like that, I mean, you know, I just think about my time in Portugal with my wife, right? Like, I remember being in a hotel room, I couldn't put. I could put my lights on until I put my key card in a slot that activated my, you know, my electricity in my room, right? Like, so there are ways to really combat what the concern is, but. But to the overall point is, we we need to submeter every unit, right? We have to know what each individual resident is using. Uh, one way or the other, what however that that shakes out, and then the other side is is making sure we have. Built into our buildings those um, those safeguards as much as possible, you know, so.
Barbara makes an extra excellent point, though, no question, this is gonna be a practical change for folks, and we need to anticipate that for sure.
And do, and I think we need to also start, I know that we're consistent, nothing is going to change, nothing is going to change. Everything is still going to be the same, but obviously, this right here is an example of things not being the same that we. Live here are not used to doing this, so now, I think what we have to start doing is incorporating it when we're educating them about this project. It's saying, listen, yes, you may, um, we, it's not decided yet, or there is a possibility that you may be responsible for. For your, um, you know, your lighting. Is it in your gas, and I mean, there's a lot of that help individuals that, you know, of the ink of that income that, you know. That would help it, um, but again, it's about educating them and letting them know because they're gonna be, yeah, I could see.
Point I've taken away from this meeting and um, I didn't know that, I I did not know that that was the case, so thank you Barbara for asking that question.
Actually, thank the resident, because to be honest with the other resident, I didn't even think about it, because everything that was being said was, everything's gonna. The same, so in my head is like, well, everything's gonna be stayed the same, that's what made me the question today.
Once before, I remember this conversation from a no- a prior meeting, and I believe we talked about this.
Never heard it.
Sorry, I was gonna say, there's a lot of repetition and a lot of education to go through the process and. Um, you know, when, well, I think when, when anybody has said that things aren't gonna change, they're mostly referring to. The percentage of income that residents will pay for their housing costs, including rent and utilities, which. So far, utilities have been included in the rent, and now that may get bifurcated. To where there's a payment for the utility separate from payment to the rent, but the total will be the same thirty percent of of the residents.
Your rent will be the same thirty percent, but now you're adding an additional bill.
You're not understanding.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
Then explain again.
So you pay a hundred dollars, Barbara, let's say for rent, right? Uh, in that rent currently, there is a charge associated with your utilities. The new way would be, let's say, eighty dollars of that is for your rent and then. Uh, or or seventy dollars of that is for your rent and then thirty dollars of that is for your utilities, or wha- whatever it may be, right? Whatever the breakdown may be. So you're still, at the end of the day, you're still paying that hundred dollars, however, however, the the caveat there is. You go out, you go away for the weekend, you leave your air conditioner blasting the whole time, right? It's gonna cause an increase or a spike in that, in that utility bill, right? It that's an educational thing, but but to. Combat that, is there a way, and maybe, maybe it's me who doesn't understand the payment process, where. In the new situation, when a resident is paying their rent or and or utility bill, is that one check coming to the Housing Authority? And then we're bifurcating it, it becomes one check to the Housing Authority, a separate check to P S E N G.
Yeah.
Yeah, the utilities will be in the residence name.
Okay.
Exactly, so, so right now, that's what we don't have.
Right, so can we?
No resident has a P S E N G bill. If we switch, that means that every resident has to get a P S E and V.
Correct.
And you guys are aware that to open P S E and D accounts can cost up to five hundred dollars deposit, right?
Yeah, and the Housing Authority would probably cover that.
Right, right. Could I ask this question, is there a way we can do it as a surcharge and continue to pay the utility?
No.
No way.
No. There are authorities that, that uh keep all of the utilities in the project's name, the authority pays them. And they're submetered and they bill the tenants for the utility usage.
But we can do that then.
That that is.
On the flip side, on the flip side of what, you know, the scenario Mike just pointed out, where, you know, the hypothetical of somebody who leaves their air conditioning on. You know, I mean, there there's, there's many cases throughout history when you give somebody also the power to lower their bills. Right, take more responsibility, I mean.
They pay less, they pay twenty five percent of their.
Right, yeah, exactly, they they can actually save a few bucks by being diligent about keeping lights off and not running their AC and. You know, tacking their thermostat up a few degrees when they're they're gonna be away for a weekend, that that's, that's where they get rewarded for.
It's it's responsible. Usage of utilities is what it boils down to.
Yeah, and 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 I get all of that.
Let me just clarify for a second in terms of uh, not supposed to, I I think we might have been talking about two different things. Jaime, you were talking about public housing, correct?
Well, um.
When you said that the the authority could continue to to pay it.
But that certainly, that certainly happens, yes.
Yeah, when Shannon mentioned, uh, you're not supposed to, I think she, what she's talking about is once we convert to section eight. And it's my understanding as well that you couldn't do what you described, once it goes to section eight.
That that's possible, I'm 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 less of an expert on that than Shannon is, I'll refer to her uh.
Well, we could look into that, because it occurs to me that if you were gonna do that, you'd have to talk to who the developer is. And get them to buy into that, uh, frankly, I've never seen a developer would.
Yeah, I I would like to say this just at the top of the world again, um, so so if 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 a residence rent is five hundred dollars right now. That's thirty percent of their income for rent and utilities, so they're paying the Housing Authority five hundred dollars. Under the new system, a study is done for a two bedroom unit and say the electrical study comes back that what the electrical cost for that. Unit is is a hundred and twenty dollars, right? So now, instead of paying the Housing Authority five hundred, the resident pays the Housing Authority three eighty, right? So their rent goes down, but that hundred and twenty is not paid to the Housing Authority. And that is meant to be paid to the utility company, right?
Correct.
So it's not like you're paying above your thirty percent, and again, that if you can save money out of that one twenty and only pay a hundred, you win. And I I have found, I've I've dealt with this a lot through my career, and I've found that many residents love it because it puts money back in their pocket. Uh, but some residents who again like to keep that AC on when they're out of the house, they don't pay any attention, they wind up a little higher bill. But I've also found that the engineering studies to to set that utility allowance, it's called. Uh, i- is pretty conservative, they're they're pretty good at at saying, you know, this is a real amount that would take. For a family of four and what their utility bill to make sure that's covered, uh, so that that is what a utility allowance does. And actually, if you'll experience that sometimes, um, if a if a family's um, uh, rent is a hundred dollars. And their utility is one twenty, uh, the Housing Authority actually reverses them, reimburses them for that twenty dollars every month. But that's how a utility allowance works, I I just wanna make sure everyone is clear on that.
I get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for explaining it, I get it now, I just feel like we need to start making our residents aware.
I like that.
This can can become a real issue later on for us, with the residents.
Also, the new buildings might be heated with.
new buildings might be heated with electric heat and it might be tied to the, uh, to the apartment in terms of billing, uh, might be on the meter. And these, these apartments will also be air conditioned and heated, uh, cause that's how it's done these days. So utility deals can be very high.
Yeah. And that's an issue. I, I will say that in one development I did, um, we struck a deal with the utility company that any of our people, um, that came in, um, uh, the housing authority covered the initial deposits and they were automatically accepted. So we worked with the utility company from the beginning and, and there are ways to do this.
And I also think, I also think it's important to let the residents know that there's also state programs that because of their income will also allow them to, to, um, help them pay for it such as line heat U S F. Those are applications where they can get money, um, well, they don't actually get the money. It gets put directly into their, um, P S E and G account. Um, so the state will send P S E and G directly their checks. Um, there's, um, on a monthly basis and there's also emergency money for those who unfortunately get backed up. Um, every, um, every few months, the state with that, that program where you can apply for emergency, um, assistance. And again, the check doesn't go to you, go to the individual, it goes to the account. So I think we kind of sell it to them like that to let them know, look, it's not just gonna fall on you. You know, the, the, we're gonna, this is what we have to do, but there's also these that you guys get into, cause most of them will qualify for it with their income.
And director can, I'm sure as we're, as we're moving people in and out of, of units, I'm sure we could set up an initial, um, uh, meeting, uh, with Barbara specifically, so she could help every one of those residents apply for all of those grants.
Absolutely. I mean, we're here, we're in the community, you know. We're right here. That's what we're here for. So if there's any way that we can help to start getting everybody to, to, obviously, once we move forward, to start getting them into these, um, these programs. Even that line U S F can help them with their deposit. So if it doesn't come out of housing, then to, to, to give us the money. I mean, these are all ideas and the record, we could all sit down together and.
Make it part of their movement process.
Sit down. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And, and, and at that point too, by the way, you know, we'll have a re, uh, uh, a, uh, relocation specialist on board as well that sits with each, each family individually and works out a relocation plan. So it can be part of that with a packet with all the information. There, there are ways to approach this.
Thanks.
Great idea.
Good stuff.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? I, I think this has been productive. I think we'll look forward to, uh, coming and, and having, uh, the public discussion at our February tenth meeting. And, uh, we will, uh, be, uh, forming a resolution to be passed at the next meeting, uh, to move us forward on our understandings. And, uh, and we'll be off in twenty twenty-two.
Director, I have a question with respect to what we would be presenting at the February meeting. In addition to the material that you prepared, we have what Brian did. Is that going to be part of what we would be approving? Is that gonna be presented separately or is that not necessarily gonna be presented in the public discussion?
Yeah, my, my vision of that, although it can be made to change, is that, uh, we will be having a discussion about the resolution that is written. And, and within the resolution, we'll have our, our new, if you, if you will, our new development principles that we've fashioned um, through the memo that was written, that was given to everyone. And that was my vision was to work off of that resolution. Um, I, I have no problem with also presenting what Brian had. I think that may be a good addition to the meeting as we present. Um, I, I think that works.
Uh, does that also be presu- approved by resolution?
Yeah, I don't know why a working document would be approved by a resolution.
Yeah, it was, it was meant to, I mean, just to be, just to be clear, it was meant to be, uh, illustrative to explain to the board like tonight, but, um.
So I, I understand that. I'm talking about going forward. I'm, I'm thinking about next steps.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Okay, so I think what I just heard is we're not gonna approve that, but you don't have any problem in using it as an illustration of where we might go. But it's not gonna have the same status as the two-page memo.
I think that's fair, yes.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think.
And what I'm gonna do then is I'm gonna prepare a resolution, make the changes based upon the discussion tonight in the, uh, two pages with the resolution to you and then before the meeting to all of the members of the board so that they have it in front of them in advance.
We'll try to get that out early.
I do like the idea. I do like the idea, especially given what this community just went through of showing as much illustrations as we can in the meeting prior to us taking a vote. I don't, I don't want people to perceive this as, um, you know, two hundred forty million dollar high school two-point-O.
But I do think that if we are still going to be tentative in terms of the details of what was done by Brian, that we want to make it clear as he said, that this is not the same status as this two-pager. It's something which is subject to further revision.
Better yet, the fact that we're not. I, I want to see the sausage being made a little bit more than was done with high school, okay? So anytime we could throw up an illustration, yeah, put all the qualifiers you want around it, but I, I want it to be on the public record as we're, as we're planning, that we're not just saying like, hey, you're done, here you go, take it or leave it, you know?
And I think the language that Brian put in here about it being tentative is very clear. He may wanna go back and look to see whether or not there's anything else he wants to change before the February meeting. And I think the director just said, we're gonna give it out. I just wanted to know whether or not we're gonna give it sanctioned at this point and what I've heard is no.
Right.
Right.
Right, because there's so, as we talked about, there's development partners coming in at a later date. We can't do that.
Perfect.
And we need, and we, we need to say that during the public meeting and say, you know, this, this is what these guys will be voting on. This is where it is right now. It's not gonna change much, but it's gonna be crystallized and then they'll be voting on it. But hey, here's where we are. Full, the full disclosure. Out there in the open, right out on the table.
Will the residents, um, be able to understand or get a copy of this if they're not gonna be able to attend the February meeting? So we don't run into this issue that we're not being transparent because everything is on the website. And it's on, so if you see my social media, Barbara shares it. Uh, Danny's been putting everything up on social media, Twitter, and we keep re- retweeting. So people are seeing that we're being very transparent. We have very, been very transparent from day one. Uh, my only question is if people, if we're, people are not able to either A, get on a Zoom, if we were in a, uh, not in a COVID situation, we would have people in the room, tons of people in the room trying to understand. So I don't know how we're gonna get around that where people feel that we're, we did not slight them, we're doing everything correct. We are in, I'm still in a pandemic. But how do we still get their buy, uh, not even buy-in? How do we get their feedback? Maybe you give a plan when you're doing the survey, when you're meeting everybody. Is there something we can give the residents so they understand?
I think that's why it's important to get things on the public record. And part of, there's a video around this, right? And, and it'll be, it can live on our website and people can who missed the February meeting can review it at any moment between, or missed the, uh, yeah, February meeting can, can give us comments between February and March. I- if there's something that you know, upsets them or something they like or something they wanna react to in one way or the other, they'll have a whole month to do that and we will put out there. We plan on voting on something that's gonna be crystallized between now, but this is where it's at right now.
We have to do like a Nixle or something, somebody, because again, not enough people come to these meetings where I feel confident that they're gonna say, you went above my head. Where we, you know, we didn't, we know we're doing the right thing, but we're also in the middle of a pandemic. So you have to take it up another level to make sure everybody is, uh, is getting the information. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, I like that, Eric. And I think the idea of, of a Nixle saying there's, there are revised development principles or whatever we're gonna call them by the time we're on February tenth. Uh, please log on and have it very prominently on top of the webpage. I think the development principles, we passed out very widely when they were done last year.
They saw them.
Yeah, and, and we passed them out. So I think another, another version of that may be called for as well.
Director, I had a resident say they didn't sign up for the Nixle when we originally were signing people up and they wanna know how can they sign up for the Nixle?
Yeah, it's easy. Yeah, I'll, I'll recheck the webpage, but I think it's pretty prominent on our webpage, but I'll recheck right after.
Okay.
That's what I was actually gonna say, Barbara. I think, uh, when we talk about Nixle, the thing that we need to work on next is really making sure how many people are signed up for the Nixle.
How many people do you guys have? Because?
Right, so for, compared to the number of people that we have, so in making sure that those numbers are, are good. So I think that's a good push to, to get that, that database is, uh, up to par as, as it can be.
And, and Frank, if, if, if I understand correctly with the Nixle, you could create subgroups in the Nixle.
My building.
Yeah.
And we do.
Some, some buildings have more participation than others. But that's what, that's, yeah.
Because, uh, people outside of the authority could also sign up for the Nixle, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so you wanna, you wanna be able to.
Yeah, right now we have.
Not for any other particular reason, but you wanna be able to separate the one you need to, so.
No, this weekend was a perfect example. There was need to, to like reach very specific buildings and be, having that, those subgroups came in very handy, so. But yeah, to, to get, so maybe going back to what we were talking about earlier about getting by floor by floor. So maybe getting this floor by floor, getting everybody's fresh phone number so that we get them onto the Nixle, getting them onto that, uh, getting them to fill the, the survey. Giving, giving them that one presentation, uh, something like a summary of the presentation. And then at that point, now we have the fresh phone numbers, we've given them the thing, they've filled out the survey. And now we, we have a better ability to communicate with them and, and I don't know if anybody has access here to some kind of local access channel. If we can get some cable company to give us a channel, we should just have a channel that we have on a loop.
Both Cablevision and Verizon or Optimum and Verizon have
Everybody has.
Designated channels for local access. All we have to do is contact them.
So we can have these meetings, any public meeting should be on that channel. So that we don't worry about them logging in. Now, as far as them, you know, participating, that's another story, but at least to view it. And like, uh, just on a loop, uh, you know.
We could, we could also just do it through the city's, uh, public access. If you send that, like, if we, our meetings or any presentations, anything like that, all we have to do is send that to the city and they could put it in their loop of council meetings or any other meetings that they're doing. So, yeah, and we, and, but we should, we should try to get our own, our own, uh, feed there. That absolutely.
If we can get a redevelopment feed, it just plays all day, whenever anybody is.
All right, first of all, folks, we're getting a little bit a field, other than talking about the redevelopment aspect from the closed session purpose here. I think this is a very good discussion and we ought to have it with the entire authority in, in that type of forum. I will point out to you, there's a tremendous amount of law if you decide to put all of your meetings out in the public at the same time. I know a lot of people do it. There are a lot of people that don't do it, but there are a lot of policy decisions here before we do. If we're talking about specific things, as the commissioner says, he's absolutely right. They have to put it up for you. That's part of their commitment when they got the original right to be your provider. On the other hand, if we're gonna have all of our meetings open to the public and also on some service, we're gonna have to make changes in how we operate and we ought to talk about that before we do.
All right, for, for, for all purposes though, we're, we're done here, right? I don't wanna go down that rabbit hole too far.
Right, that's, I agree. Um, I, let me just make one comment. Based upon what's been said here, I, I thought that the best thing would be to pull the next step here, expanded development principles and incorporate everything from before and everything we discussed tonight into one document.
Sure.
You okay with that, Director?
Agreed.
Okay.
Thank you all. Very good meeting. Chairman, it's up to you.
Yes, I'll make a motion to come out of closed session. All in favor? Aye.
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 So.
So we're now in the open session. No action's been taken by the authority. There will be subsequent action, but that will be at a future meeting.
Sounds good. All right, motion to close.
Motion.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you all.
Great meeting.
Have a good night.
Night.
Thanks, team.